Evening, everyone. I'm Judy Salamon, the Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the Town of Manlius. Tonight, we have four appeals to hear and decide whether to grant or deny the applicant's request for area variance, all based on the established zoning laws and regulations of the Town of Man- Manlius. The meeting will come to order. Please all stand and face our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
The board members reviewed the minutes from the last meeting and they have a motion for approval as written.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It has been approved. The legal notices for this meeting have been published. May I request a motion to waive the reading of these notices first? First motion, second?
I'll make a motion to waive the reading.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the first item on the agenda is Elizabeth Kearney of 7235 Collama Road, East Syracuse, requesting an area variance for the installation of a 10 by 15 shed with an existing side yard setback of 12 feet. They will need a variance of 8 feet to meet required 20 foot feet for a side yard setback. Hi, Elizabeth?
Hi.
Are you there? You can hear us okay?
Yes, I can, and, and thank you for the opportunity to, uh, to Zoom. I appreciate it.
Problem. You want to tell us a little bit about your plans?
Um, we need extra storage for gardening. And this space puts us on high ground away from some, sometimes very damp property. It also, uh, our neighbors like it because it does not obstruct our view of the woodlands behind us.
Any questions?
Questions?
Good evening.
How you doing this evening?
Oh, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. A couple of questions. When you're putting the shed basically in front of the house.
Yes.
Right? Yeah. And where are you putting it? You're going to cut off access to the backyard.
Uh, actually, no, it leaves us access to that back fence. And it also provides us convenient access to our garage and driveway.
Uh, and the, um, yeah, where are you positioning the shed?
Yeah.
So you can hear me a little better.
Yeah.
You're, yeah, but if I, if you take, I'm a numbers man, okay? I play with the numbers.
Okay, yes.
So I started with the, the 67 feet that the house is set back. Okay, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, and I want to make sure that the shed that's closest to the street, that end of the shed is further back than the 40 feet that's minimum required. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Um, no, I'm sorry.
No, okay. I don't know how to, um, I could point it out, but I don't always go do any good, you know, here, but, um, we have a 40 foot setback for the front of the house. Right?
Oh, I was only aware of the setback from the boundary on the side.
Side, yes, that's 20 feet, but from the front, it's 40 feet.
Yes.
Okay.
They need a variance for that too.
Well, they got to make sure they keep it back behind the 40 feet so it doesn't interfere with the 40 foot setback.
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
So basically, if you take the 40 feet plus the 15 foot shed, right, you're up to 55 feet and the house is what, 67? So you're, it's about 10 feet there that you're playing with.
Yes.
Okay? Um, but you don't think that's going to be, that's not going to restrict any kind of like a vehicle trying to get to your backyard?
Uh, no, sir, because the vehicle access is on the other side of the house.
The other side, the other side's got 11 feet.
People had to get around it to go that way.
Okay, all right, all right. Let's see what else we get. Um, the, um, the other thing is from your lot line to the back of the garage, it shows 21 foot eight inches. You follow me?
To, to, to the back of our existing garage?
Right, from there to the side lot line.
Okay.
Okay, it shows 21 eight. You don't have this in front of you?
Um.
You don't have your application in front of you?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I do not. Um, I could get it, but you're talking about an existing condition, correct?
Yes, yes.
All right.
Do you have it where you could pull it up and put it on the screen? That way she can see what we're talking about. Thank you. We're gonna, we're gonna pull it up on the screen so you'll be able to see it too, okay? That way you can see what it's talking about.
All right, but we're, we're talking about an existing condition, correct?
Yes, yes, nothing wrong with it.
Okay.
You know, I'm just referring to that as, as far as the setback, back to the shed. Okay?
Okay.
Let's see if we get to that. Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you, yeah.
Yeah, so at the back of the garage.
Do you have the cursor, John?
Oh, I see, it did 21 feet. Yes.
Okay, so if you're coming in back to your shed now, you're coming off that side lot line 12 feet. Right?
Yes.
You say you need eight, or, or let's say if you take the full 10 feet of shed, your shed's going to come in closer to your driveway. It'll be right on the edge of your driveway.
Yes.
What you're saying is it coming about four inches from the edge, right, because of the map of that?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, I, I, I'll just leave it at this. When, if you get approval, okay?
Yes.
Assuming you do, just be careful that they, make sure they're 40 feet in from the front.
Yes, sir.
Okay? And I don't want to drop my, the rest of my questions.
All right, but yes, thank you very much for your advice. We will make sure it's 40 feet in from that front property line.
Yes, thank you.
I have a much simpler question.
Yes.
Will it, uh, match the color of the house?
Yes. Yes, it's a, it's a multi-colored brick house. It will match some of the bricks.
I'll do it simply.
Does the board have any other questions? I'm going to ask you five criteria questions, okay? Well, this one, she didn't.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
We didn't open it.
I'm going to ask.
Yeah, I'm going to open the public hearing.
So anyone from the public wish to speak on this? Okay?
Okay.
Can close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing. One second.
Yeah, me and Kip.
Yeah, yeah, we opened it.
Okay, so now I'm going to ask the board the five criteria questions because Mrs. Kearney has already answered those, all right. Uh, question number one, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other feasible method?
After where I want to put it.
So.
Whether it will, undesirable change would be produced in character of neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties?
No, I don't think so.
One of the neighbors in support of it.
They've got other sheds in the area.
Yeah.
Actually, there's a house down the street. It's much closer to the street. Um, so.
Well, and as she said, you know, putting it in the backyard, that property gets wet, so it would be less useful back there.
Whether the requested variance is substantial?
No. Yeah.
I don't think so.
No.
Whether the variance will have an adverse effect on physical or environmental conditions?
No.
Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created?
Yes.
Anything else from the board? Discuss the applications? Benefit to the application does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood or community? Or the benefit to the applicant does not outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood or community?
Well, I'd say it does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood. There's no problem to the neighborhood.
Just before, right?
Nope, this is it.
Right. Okay, may I ask for a motion to approve or deny the request?
Madam Chairwoman, I'd like to make a motion to approve a eight-foot variance to complete the 20-foot required side yard setback for Elizabeth and William Kearney at the real property of 7235 Collama Road, East Syracuse, 13057.
One second?
One second, ten, yeah.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, you're all set, Mrs. Green?
Thank you very much.
So, Dutchel, um, yeah, Lisa will send out your building permit to you.
Thank you.
Great night.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to the second item of the agenda. It's Laura Zulu, Zulu of 8281 Kimball Road, Manlius, a public hearing for two area variances for the installation of a 10 by 14 shed within existing rear yard setback of 23 feet. They will need a variance of 17 feet to meet the required 40 foot for a rear yard setback. Second is with an existing side yard setback of 16 feet, they will need a variance of four feet to meet required 20 feet for a side, side yard setback. Hi.
Hello.
Hello. Are you the Zulos?
We are.
All right, welcome.
Thank you.
So can you tell us a little bit what you plan on doing?
Sure, so we, uh, we want to put a shed in our backyard to put our lawnmower in and just garden stuff. Um, our current shed is in poor condition and not in a great place in the yard, so we'd like to put a larger shed in another part of the yard.
Anybody have any questions for?
We're going to open the public hearing.
Yeah, we can.
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Let's open the public hearing, sure, yeah. I'll make that motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, do you have any questions for the Zulos?
Uh, question, um, I was there at your property and saw where you're going to put it and everything. And so my only question is, the shed that you show in the paperwork, that's about what you're going to purchase and install?
Yes, it comes, it's coming, it comes prefabricated.
Right, right, is that going to match the house in color and so on and so forth?
Yep.
Yes.
Right. And what's it going to be, uh, is it going to be on like, um, the, uh, like pad of gravel? Is it going to be, uh, is that blocks up in the air? What's it going to?
So we're going to put a, um, a pad of gravel, like crusher run on it, and then we're probably going to put blocks on top of that.
Uh huh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Welcome.
Anybody else? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing on this item?
I'll make the motion.
Only, only question I had was, uh, why that spot versus where it is now, just to clarify.
So the spot where it is now is, I mean, it's literally right on our, um, on our property line, and it's a very small shed, and we cleaned out this spot here when we first moved into the house. And it's, uh, it's kind of, it's kind of out of the way, so it's a nice setback for us to keep the shed, you know, kind of out of the way, so it's not really in the middle of our yard.
Have a motion to close the public hearing?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second? All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
I'm going to go through five criteria questions with the board that you've already answered on your application. So I'm going to ask the board whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other feasible method?
Well, yeah, they could move this thing in and not require the setbacks, uh, but, um, you know, where, where they're going to put it is, is, it's kind of like out of the way. It's up in that corner. And it looks like a real nice place to have it and still leave the remainder of their yard open for other activities and so on, so, uh, my answer to that was, they could, but it's practical work.
Anybody else? Okay, number two, whether undesirable change would be produced in character of neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties?
No, 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 you see other sheds in the area, so.
Okay, number three, whether the requested variance is substantial?
No.
Number four, whether the variance will have an adverse effect on physical or environmental conditions?
No.
No.
Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created?
Yes, yes.
So I'm going to ask the board, the benefit to the application does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood or does not?
It does outweigh the. Yeah, yeah.
And C core, there's no C core here. I have a motion to approve or deny this application?
Madam Chairperson, I move that zoning board granted an area variance to Lara and James Zulo for the real property located at 8281 Kimball Road, Manlius, New York, 13104. This variance is being granted for the specific purpose of permitting the construction of a 10 by 14 foot shed, thereby modifying the 40 foot year rear yard setback to that of 23 feet, leaving a variance of 17 feet, and modifying the 20 foot side yard setback to that of 16 feet, leaving a variance of four feet.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All set?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Two.
Next on the agenda is Scott and Holly of 5819 Durham Lane, East Syracuse, a public hearing for two area variances for the installation of a 14 by 26 in-ground pool. With an existing front yard setback of 16 feet, they will need a variance of 14 feet to meet the required 30 foot front yard setback. With an existing side yard setback of 10 feet, they will need a variance of five feet to meet required 15 feet side yard setback. A motion to open the public hearing?
Yeah.
Second?
Clear.
Public hearing is open, and we want to discuss. Hi.
Hi, good evening. Good, and yourselves?
And thank you.
So as you can see, you can see our lot presents as a very unique situation of where they decided to build the home back in the 60s. So as we're trying to, you know, create a more fun environment for our children, we would like to put the pool in, and you can see that it doesn't quite meet the town's requirements, and that's why we're asking for the variances.
Does the, uh, says the pool, um, were shown on the, uh, on the plan there, does that interfere at all with any kind of, um, right-ofways, or is it, um, you got, you got the public utilities in that neighborhood. You got water and sewer and power and everything else, right?
They can't, yeah, they already came and did the dig safe and there's nothing in the way.
And the pool is not laying over any of it or any?
No.
Okay, okay. Okay, all right. How about the fencing? Could you explain or describe the fencing you're going to put around the pool?
So right now, we have a stockade fence that does surround the property from the back right corner of the house, um, all the way around to the front of the garage. Um, I, we do need, um, the okay to bump out the, I believe it's about six, of six feet fence proposal to go closer towards the road. Um, it does not really interfere with any of the visual from the corner. Um, there's another house right at the bottom of our hill that the fence is even closer to the road where it's an even busier intersection.
Yeah, the question was, what kind of fencing are you going to keep that?
Six-foot stockade, yep, six-foot stockade, correct.
Okay, and, and that was, the next question was, is that going to interfere with site, uh, for the cars coming around that corner?
No.
It should be okay.
Correct.
How far off the, the right-ofway is, is, is that fence line? Do you have a number there?
Yep, they're right on the, right on the proposal, right on there, they're written, um, from the corner. Yeah, it's 12 feet from there, and then from the corner of the pool, it would be 16.
16, yep, I see that now, yep. Okay. Yeah, until, yeah. All right, thank you.
Welcome.
Do you have any other questions? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion, yeah.
Second?
I will second.
All in favor?
Yep.
We had asked you to answer five criteria questions, and I'm going to ask the board to answer those same questions, okay?
Correct.
Okay, first question, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other feasible method?
Not with that law.
No.
Number two, whether undesirable change would be produced in character of neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties?
By other pools.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, I think we've got some other lots, um, that we've done this with.
Yeah, they're kind of odd.
Yeah.
Whether the requested variance is substantial?
Yes. But um, it's doable.
Number four, whether the variance will have an adverse effect on physical or environmental conditions?
No, no, they seem to have covered that, the site to line of sight with traffic, so.
That would be the only question I'd have is the line of sight. But other than that, for us, it makes sense.
That seems to be covered, too.
Yeah. Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created?
Yes.
Based on our discussion, it appears that there's no impact on the environment, therefore I propose a type-two action with.
No, we don't have to do secret.
No secret.
No secret.
Okay. Do I have a motion to grant or deny this applicant?
Do you want to do it?
Madam Chairperson, I move that the zoning board grant an area variance to Scott and Holly Schuss for the real property located at 5819 Durham Lane, East Syracuse, New York, 13057. This variance is being granted for the specific purpose of permitting the construction of a 14 by 26 foot in-ground pool, thereby modifying the 30 foot front yard setback to that of 16 feet, leaving a variance of 14 feet, and modifying the 15 foot side yard setback to that of 10 feet, leaving a variance of five feet.
Second. All in favor? You all set? When do you get your pool started?
Thank you.
That's a logist.
That's a logist, they're so backed up.
Wow, okay, well, good luck.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, bye-bye. Okay.
At that point, you just draw a picture of it.
Our fourth applicant is William T. Adams Senior of seven oh six three First Lord Road in Kirkville. Public hearing for three area variances for a two-lot subdivision with existing road frontage of a hundred feet, they will need a variance of a hundred feet to meet the required two hundred foot. For an existing lot area of one point nine nine acres, they will need a variance of point oh one acre to meet the required two acres. With existing road frontage of one twenty-five, they will need a variance of seventy-five to meet the required two hundred. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing on this item?
That'll be that.
Second. All in favor?
Alright.
Hi, do you want to talk?
One person, there's one like person who's attending.
Yeah.
For this one, so I think they might be here for the public here to see.
Gotcha, okay.
Who gets this?
We all.
Okay, everybody, there's one for you.
Hi, do you want to talk about what you plan on doing?
Um, well, to start with, my wife and I raised five kids up First Lord Road, some of which have expressed interest in remaining in the area. And I bought these, this property at the tax auction, it was actually three addresses. And so the county intended to make it all one property because they connected, I would have addressed that seeing if I could have kept it the way it was. But what I'm asking is actually really consistent with the neighborhood, the original subdivision lots are a hundred foot wide. Um, and far less than the current required, that I believe two acres of area. As the one side limit needs the road front. Lot number one is close to two acres and, but it still needs an area variance, but it's more really the road front variance. Back in twenty thirteen, I bought another vacant lot, which is known as seventy-one sixty-three First Lord Road. That was a hundred foot and I needed to give a variance and I believe that was a half an acre, give or take. And I was granted the both variances for that lot and, and put a four-bedroom, two-bedroom home on that property for our oldest daughter. And I'm basically just seeking to do the same thing with these two lots. One of which I've already begun putting the home on seven zero six three. Currently has a modular home that I hope to have completed by the end of the year.
Did we open the public hearing or public? Will open?
Yes.
Yes.
Favorite questions?
Yes, go ahead.
Questions?
Uh, question one, um, on the, um, one of the lots, I don't know which one, number one and number two, let me give it. You've already got a home on there, as you say.
Yeah, that has just been being put up.
Uh, I mean, uh, well, 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 what would you do if we turned it down? Because you can't use that as a lot?
Oh, no, 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 it's currently, it's fine as a lot as a whole, currently together, it's over four acres with
Oh, with, with a one.
Twenty-five feet of road run. If I separated out the one where the house currently is, will have a hundred and twenty-five feet of road runs and two point two three acres of area, which is, the area part is fine. So if we sum it up, I'm going to, and, and if it is approved, I'm going to put a home on lot number one as well.
So for this map, that is on lot two, that you've got.
Home is on lot two.
So, yeah, so you, if we leave it at one lot, then you wouldn't need any here.
Correct, but I wouldn't be able to put another home on.
True, true, yeah, but just trying to get my bearing. I see, okay, yeah.
Lot, lot number one used to be known as seven zero seven nine First Lord Road. And you had a mobile home on.
And is, is the, um, on Inverness County Sewer, um, if they give me your permit for your septic tank?
Yeah, there's currently, or you can get that from Lisa, there's currently a completely new septic system on lot number two where the home is currently.
And they'll give you the, you know, basically, okay, one, uh, same thing for lot one?
Yeah, I mean, I'll have to have the per testing and everything done, but it's all, it's all sand there, it's, it's sandy ten feet down.
Oh, it is?
There's gonna be, it was approved for a regular conventional system on lot two, and I believe it will do the same.
Should be the same for one.
For lot number one, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. You seem to have that house existing, the new one, the front door seems to be up off the ground.
Currently, it's not complete, there's going to be a pressure-treated, um, deck porch stairs.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Home, there's also a door on the side which will have a smaller pressure-treated deck-type stairs going to that door and there's sliders on the back which will have eight, eight, or, I think, eight by twelve pressure-treated decks there and when completed, there will be a sidewalk connecting that deck to the side stairs coming around to the front stairs and then out to the driveway.
Well, well, yeah, and again, uh, not part of this deal, but you're already four feet in the ground also?
Four feet in the ground.
Yeah, for frost line.
No, 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 the modular home is on a concrete pad.
Oh, that's why, I see.
Yes.
So you didn't, you didn't, no basement there?
No, 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 no basement.
I see.
I could have put a basement in, there's plenty of drainage with sand and stuff that's there, but that, that was not what I intended.
Okay, I assumed there was a basement, but.
No, 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 no basement, prossage, uh, yeah, concrete slatter. And blocks are, the blocks are all morgue together, there is no metal framework. The home currently there has two by ten floor construction. So when you look under the prossage, you're not seeing a bunch of things holding the house up or anything, it is all set on the actual foundation.
Yeah.
Except for in the middle, I think there is either three or four
Lolly cello, sure.
Uh, concrete block pillars that hold the two halves, it's a modular home, so hold the two halves of the house in the center, rather than that, it's all vital.
Yeah.
Water lines are, also, also a water line already in, on lot number one, because there actually is a single Y roll.
Okay.
There are utilities, water lines, and, I mean, everybody would be a septic system, but from a single Y roll home, but I won't use that, I would put in, I don't even do any of that, I'll put in a hole and set the system for that property as well.
Yeah, now, my last question would be, do you own any other property connected to that?
Not connected to those, but I do own more properties on First Lord Road.
That's right, but that, that parcel right there, that is the pole.
Right, no, that, um, the one there is, they have it marked that on why it's, it's, um, it's, uh, the house there is, there's a house there and actually, this lot here is actually, that's only seventy-five foot of road run and two hundred foot deep and there's a I think a three-bedroom home on that lot.
But you don't go further back, there aren't any.
Not, not, not at that end of the road.
So those two lots, those two lot, that's the total of the property?
Yeah, all that is, whatever it adds up to approximately four point two two acres, so.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions?
The attendee left.
Okay. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing? Second. All in favor?
Alright.
Can I ask the five criteria questions of the board?
Uh, before we do that.
Yes.
This is a listed action, so we do need to do seeker on this because of the acreage, the size of the subdivision, so I can walk you through seeker if you'd like at this time, um, does anyone want to make a motion at this time to designate the Town of Manly zoning board as lead agency for seeker purposes?
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor? Alright. Okay.
Can I ask what that is?
Yeah, it's a state, state environmental quality review act, when a subdivision exceeds a certain amount of acres, we have to consider, um, the environmental criteria, looks like somebody prepared a part one, uh, and submitted it to the board, a part one for the seeker for short form environmental assessment form here. So, you have filled it out or, or somebody's filled it out. Uh, looks like you signed it as well.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep.
Did planning.
He went to the planning board, please.
Yes, I went to the planning board first and they told me that I would need a variance.
Correct, okay, so you did submit a, you did submit a short environmental assessment form though, I believe you are William Adams, right? And you signed it, okay, so I've gone through what Mr. Adams has submitted, um, this secret part one and I've made a preliminary determination that there will not be significant environmental impact as a result of what you're looking to do here. I'll go through the questions and part.
Part different ones of planning, would they have been lead on it?
I don't know, but we're considering a different type of action, we're considering a variance, they're considering the actual subdivision itself, so we're just considering the environmental impact of the variances, so we should do seeker just on the variances that cover ourselves. Um, so I'll go through the questions, if I don't hear anyone respond to the question, I'll just assume that the answer to the question is small or minor impact. Um, and then at the end, if everybody's determined that this is going to be a small or minor impact, I'll just make an overall resolution that we make a finding for no significant environmental impact and then we can adopt it at that time. So the first question, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? Will proposed action have an envi- have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area? Will proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkway? Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonable and available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? Will the proposed action impact existing public-private water supplies, public-private wastewater treatment utilities? Will proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? Will proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, i.e. wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna? Will proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems? Will proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
So based on the responses, does anyone on the board want to make a determination that this will not have a significant environmental impact for seeker purposes?
I'll make that motion.
One second, also in the, all in favor? Alright.
Alright.
Seeker's been completed. Yep, so I'm gonna go to the.
Okay. For the five criteria questions that you had answered with the board. So whether, number one, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other feasible method?
No.
Number two, whether undesirable change would be produced in character of neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties?
No.
Number three, whether the requested variance is substantial?
No.
Number four, whether the variance will have an adverse effect on physical or environmental conditions?
No.
Number five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created?
Yes.
He wants his kids to live there.
It's neat.
That's a good thing.
It is.
I hope.
So do I have a motion to grant or deny the applicant, the request for this variance?
You want to do it, but? No.
Alright.
Thank you.
Alright, let's make sure I go to the other here. Yeah. Alright, uh, Madam Chairperson, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the following variances for William T. Adams Senior the property, real property of seventy sixty-three First Lord Road in Kirkville. Text map ID is zero four two dash zero one dash two one dot one. The first variance is with an existing road frontage of a hundred, they will need a variance of a hundred to meet the required two hundred. With an existing lot area of one point nine nine acres, they will need a variance of point zero one acre to meet the required two acres. And with an existing road frontage of one twenty-five, they will need a variance of seventy-five feet to meet the required two hundred and that's how do we verify, or how do we clarify that hundred for lot one, lot two, just do it that way?
Yeah, lot one would be the first two.
The first two and then the second, okay, so the last, so the first two that I've said were for lot one and then the the hundred and twenty-five foot frontage that will need a variance of seventy-five feet is for lot two, or what will be lot two?
Have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Alright.
You're all set?
Now, we also have to recommend it goes back to the planning board.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, I, I already know that.
Well, we have to make it official.
Oh, okay.
No, do we have to do that?
Well, you haven't completed the subdivision yet, correct?
With the.
No, I can't, well.
We, we basically pass this information on to the planning board and.
Well, unless it's a simple subdivision, I don't know. Okay, so they'd have to approve the variance and then it would go back to planning so they can close out it on their end. Correct, so, yeah, if we want to just make a motion to pass this back over to the.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
What's up?
Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Why didn't we get this?
Did I understand that somebody that wanted to be here via that? There was one person logged in at one point. Uh, it was a person named Mike, asking to turn it okay, uh, but they left before we had an opportunity to let him see.
And it was for my thing?
We don't know. They could have just been.
I was gonna say, I've, I've been on that road since nineteen sixty-six. And I'm trying to think, I don't think I know anybody named Mike that's on the road or even anywhere around.
Either way, maybe you can fill that in the next week comments, you're all good.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other business to bring up in front of the board, to the board?
Only because we haven't been in a while, is there anything new with the, the zoning changes, the scoreboard? It, or we all set with all that for right now?
Um, you heard me say the shed, right? The twelve by twelve sheds don't need building permits anymore?
It was, it was ten by ten?
Yeah, now it's up to twelve by twelve.
Up to a hundred and forty horse.
Right.
Okay.
Um, shed. Yeah, we, we don't have anything to say about filling.
They're gonna be working on that in January.
Yeah, we don't.
Up until January.
Yeah, we don't have anything to say about that.
Other than, I think I want to be in on the interviews. Whenever the interviews, yeah, like you, yeah, so.
I mean, we could go big up somebody if we could, yeah. But, we'll wait till February, yeah, okay.
They're gonna put a.
Yeah, we'll put it out, yeah, like we've done before, yeah. Well, like a motion that.
Is it gonna be a December meeting maybe?
There is, I have one application right now for December.
One or the other.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I'll make a motion with no other business that we close this meeting?
Second. All in favor?
Alright.
Thank you.